Okay, I have two o'clock now, almost on the dot. So, this is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. Today is Thursday, June 13, 2019. It is 2:00 PM. We're in the Aline Strain Community Room of the Dawes Student Center. This is at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to consider and act on the Posted Agenda. And I'll call this meeting to order. And second item on Agenda Number One is the invocation. I'd ask Mr. Baker to provide that.
Please stand with me. Please bow. Laura, we're very thankful today for all the good things you've brought our way for this college. And we want to thank you right now for Roger Grisard and the man that you brought to our community and to our college. We want to remember him in the positive way that he lived his life for other people. We pray right now for Janine and Tyler and the Grisard family, that you'll give them the peace that surpasses all understanding as they go into this weekend and the memorial service. And may we continue to carry on his legacy here at this college. Thank you for our faculty and staff, our students, and for our board, and please be with them as they deliberate today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Let's turn and I'll conduct the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Worley, we'll move to number two, open forum. Thank you, ma'am. So we'll move to number three on the agenda, President's Report. President, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, resignations, and an enrollment report. Recognizations. I would like to begin by recognizing the late Weatherford College Trustee, Mr. Roger Grisard. Flowers have been placed at his seat at the board table in his honor. Roger served as a Weatherford College Trustee from 1987 to 2007, as chairman from 2003 to 2005, and then again as trustee from 2017 to 2019, for a total of 22 years of service. During that 22-year span, Roger served with the following presidents: President E.W. Mintz, President James T. Boyd, President Don L. Huff, interim President Joe M. Tyson, President Joseph C. Birmingham, interim President Brent Baker, and finally with President Todd Allen Farmer. As a trustee, Roger was not only my boss, he was also my friend, and I will dearly Earlier this afternoon, I ordered the Weatherford College flags to be lowered to half-staff in honor of Mr. Roger Grisard. The flags will remain at half-staff throughout the weekend of his memorial service. Additionally, earlier today, the Weatherford College Old Main Bell tolled in honor of Mr. Roger Grisard. The bell tolled seven times with seven seconds between each toll. Seven tolls and seven seconds due to seven being the number of completion. Today, we recognize his contributions to Weatherford College and celebrate his life I would now like to recognize Tanya Edwards and the Weatherford College Respiratory Care Program for receiving the distinguished RRT Credentially Success Award from the Commission on Accreditation for Respiratory Care for the fifth year in a row. Tanya, would you please stand and be recognized? The credentialing pass rate for the WC program is 100 percent, and the program has a job placement rate of greater than 90 percent, with most of the remaining students furthering their education in bachelor degree programs. Brent Baker and his institutional advancement team deserve accolades for another successful event. Nearly 600 patrons, a record, attended the 11th Annual Taste of Parker County in May, raising approximately $21,000 for the Weatherford College Foundation. Patrons sampled some of the best eats and drinks local restaurants and caterers have to offer. Hayden Hardwald and the Workforce Education Department deserve recognition for the development and kickoff of our new corporate college. Over 80 business professionals joined us on campus to hear about the skills and technical training programs available to their companies through our new corporate college. Two former Coyote baseball players were selected in the recent Major League Baseball draft. Jake Lyons was selected in the 22nd round by the Baltimore Orioles, and Mitchell Walters was picked in the 35th round by the Tampa Bay Rays. Forty former Weatherford College players have been drafted by the Major League Baseball franchises since 2004. That's fantastic. Congratulations are in order for the Weatherford College rodeo team and coaches Johnny Emmons and Tyler Gifford. I just returned from the College National Final Rodeo in Casper, Wyoming this morning, and the WC CNFR qualifiers are doing great. WC sent a record number of seven qualifiers this year. Several of them are poised to make the finals this Saturday. We wish them well. Go Coyotes! Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Jeffrey Dunn, our former reference librarian, ceased employment with an effective date of 5/16/2019. Lair Houston, our enrollment management secretary, resigned with an effective date of 6/3/2019. Lori Lum resigned with an effective date of 5/14/2019. Steve McCaslin, an instructor in public safety EMS, had a resignation effective date of 6/30/2019. And Marilyn St. Clair has resigned from her department chair role but will remain in a nine-month faculty role, effective 5/31/2019. We thank Jeffrey, Lair, Lori, Steve, and Marilyn for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment update. Enrollment was up 3 percent in the summer session with a total of 1,733 students. Projections for the Summer Two Session are up 10 percent, and with 88 days remaining prior to the Fall 2019 Census Date, we are up 17 percent, or 384 students year-to-date. While it is still early, it is likely that we will exceed record-high enrollment numbers again this fall. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Four, the Consent Agenda and Financial Reports, and we'll deal with that as posted in all the items A through H. Are there any comments before I ask for a motion about any of that? There's a lot of information there. If not, is there a motion and a second to approve Consent Agenda and Financial Report?
I shall move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's your man. Thank you. Number five, consideration possible action liaison for the Weatherford College Foundation Board of Directors.
I would like to nominate Lila Morris.
And just so you'll know, Judy, Board Member Judy McAnally asked to be replaced, and so that's the only reason you're getting on.
No, and I appreciate it. It's just kind of crazy.
We hate to lose her, but there's a motion for Lila Morris. Is there a second on that? I'll make the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. That passes. Thank you. Thank you, Lila. All right. Number six, reports. We'll go to A, Proposed 2019-20 Budget Report. Dr. Cantrell.
I was asking Larry if he had set up. Today, I'm going to speak to the proposed budget. I don't plan to go in-depth, but I'll be glad to answer all questions that anyone has. Feeling like when we're ready to go to in-depth, we'll go to a budget workshop or possibly in the July board meeting, whatever your wishes are. We could go at that time, and hopefully we'll know more on the taxes and what's going to take place there. But the Weatherford College 2019-20 budget is presented as balanced budget as of today. The revenues and expenditures totaled for the, it says 21819, but it's 1920, $58,354.645. This is an increase of $2,349,770 over the 1819, or 1920 budget, I'm sorry. This budget has been adjusted for the most recent information available. As far as major changes to the budget over this current year, we received our information on our state appropriations. We will be receiving $597,713 per each year of the biennium, more than the prior year's An increase of $523,000 in student aid due to Pell and Stafford loan growth, a decrease in operating grants of $97,461. But let me tell you, make you aware, that that figure could very possibly change by the time you see this in July, because we, from time to time, are receiving more awards as we go along, so adjustments will be made. An increase of $984,309 in tuition and fees due to the 6 percent rate increase adopted in March. Local funds other increased by $265,386 due to the increase in interest income, and thankfully we've got that figure locked in, no matter what the Fed does at this time, and it's looking really good for us. Auxiliary services decreased by $59,704 due to a decrease in bookstore commissions. Bookstore commissions have been dropping over the last couple of years, and that's due to the different avenues that students have to go to purchase their books. And also, some initiatives that are coming up that may change some funding on the truce of advising for the, with books, where we can go in and they will be giving a key to go in and sign on instead of having to buy books. We're working on this. This will be a pilot year this coming year, doing this and then the following year. So, this is not unusual across the state. Last year, when they visited with me, I know they had decreased that Odessa would not even receive a commission at that time. It's just that book sales are really going down, just the different ways that it's offered. Auxiliary services decreased by $59,704, well, due to the decrease in the bookstore. But overall, in the cafeteria, other areas, we're up. It looks very good in those areas, the dormitory and cafeteria income. An increase of $120,127 in the Wise County transfer from reserves. The 86th legislature, I'll talk a little bit more about our state appropriations, is $9,59,678 per year for the 2021 biennium. This equates to a $597,000 increase each year over the 85th legislative session, and this is broken down into core operations. Every college receives a base appropriation of $680,406, and that's basically to cover their facilities and their plant, their utilities. Student success points, we've seen $967,298, and contact hour funding of $7,411,974. When I visit with you next time, I hope to have all of those broken down, a little bit more on student success, where possibly the student success and contact hour, we can see a little bit better for each campus, what we're doing. There has been, in the budget I've presented today, it is a balanced budget, but we have not put an increase into either the Parker County Adblock property taxes or the Wise County Branch Maintenance Tax Revenue until we receive the certified value and we know exactly where we're proceeding, and the board has an opportunity to review what the tax rate will be for the coming year. Certified values will be received no later than July the 25th, when the proposed rate can be considered in August. Until that time, further compensation issues, I just wanted to bring note to you all that we have, and I'll talk about in the expenses later, we have set at this time compensation increase, but we're still working on some others that hopefully in new taxes or whatever could allow us to step up and do. Until that time, further compensation issues are under consideration by the administration for recommendation to the Board of Trustees as funding becomes available. This is where we are with our certified values. I just wanted to tell you that Parker County is at $14,149,000, and this represents a 12 percent increase over 2018. The Wise County Branch Maintenance Taxes are at $7,801, and this represents a 5 percent increase over 2018. Major changes in the expenditure section, at this point, a 4 percent salary increase for all full-time employees. Total $682,710 has been placed in the budget. We are looking at some different scenarios. We're looking at salary ranges in the schedule that's been approved to more fairly represent our funding of salaries here at the college and the placement of individuals. And I'll be glad to discuss that further in July, because I think there's some real good things that I think it will show where we actually are with the state. Our current schedule is a little bit deceiving, because it has not been changed in over 10 years. It hasn't been adjusted, and that makes it difficult to rank us with other colleges in the state. An increase of $400,000 has been placed in major repairs and renovations for deferred maintenance issues. I've got a list of those if anyone's interested, but once again, I'll go into that in July further. Technology services includes still this year $927,000 for costs associated with the second year of the implementation of the new ERP. They are moving great guns ahead. We're getting ready in the business office to convert over, start registering in the fall, and with the new ERP system, but still we have a lot to do, and we'll really actually still move into the year following this next year to be totally completed. But they've made great strides in getting us where we need to be. Now, I will, I told Dr. Farmer the other day, I visited with Greg as to see where we are, the money that was placed in there this year. He says he believes we're going to be just a little bit shy of spending approximately $200,000, and he'll give me a better figure in July, for the money that we had budgeted this year. And what we'll have to do at that point, because next year's going to cost just a little bit more, so it will be a wash, so what we will do, we'll let that go to reserves and then transfer it out of reserves for this coming year to finish up the implementation. Auxiliary enterprises decreased by $187,802 due to reduction in dormitory expenditures. If you'll recall, we did the new security systems and cameras down in the dorms, and that's, we don't have that in there again this year, so that's mainly a lot of that. Student aid increased, expenditures increased by $619,450, and that's due to an increase in Stafford loans, Pell, T-Peg, and five additional performing scholarships were placed in there. We've also increased utilities for $158,040, sort of across-the-board, water, electricity, and on all campuses. And an increase in general institutional contingency of $25,000, and that mainly, we have a policy or a general policy, we try to keep a contingency of 1 percent of the total budget, so we were just a little bit shy, and we moved that up. Any questions?
I was going to just mention, I was talking to one of the panel members on the protests at the tax appraisal office, and they've been going full guns since they opened that up, and they're going to be taking protest hearings all the way through mid-July.
So, it'll probably be late July 25th when we get that number.
Well, I think that.
Could be even past that.
I think they're working hard on that, and it's, I told him, I said, "I think what happened was, it's like stirring up a red ant bed or something."
Well, you know, this is the first year I've ever received a call in my office and wanting me to give a response as to why we're doing this, and I said, "Now, we don't have anything to do with the appraisal."
With that one.
I said, "Now, in August, we will have a hearing if we raise our rate."
That's right.
And you're welcome to come.
Anyway, that's off-base, but does that conclude that part of your report?
Yes, if you have no questions.
Dr. Cantrell, any questions or comments? If not, we'll go to Dr. Cantrell's Guided Pathways Report.
Since returning in April from the Guided Pathways Institute Number Six, we've, the team has been very busy. We've been going back and looking at prior institutes and looking at our action plan to see if we're meeting our action plan. I'll be the first to say that we have not accomplished all to date, but I think we've made very great strides in our accomplishments thus far. We're really moving. But, and today, I'd like to highlight some of the work that's been accomplished in different areas across the campus, mainly in student services and some in the business office. Next time, I plan to highlight the instructional area, or let Mike do that if you'd like to do it. But today, in an effort to assist in students during the onboarding process and to assist staff with processing admissions-related documents, several updates and changes in local procedures have occurred as a result of the Guided Pathways Initiative, such as collaboration between the testing center, registrar's office, and dual credit office has resulted in reduction of physical paperwork. With assistance from the testing center, staff now can look up TSI score reports, eliminating the need to keep a digital record. Secondly, recommendations from the dual credit office, students are admitted or as early admissions, will no longer be required to provide unofficial transcripts for admissions. Both of these changes will significantly reduce the amount of physical paperwork that is processed by personnel and student services, and most importantly, will make it more simple for students to come in and register and come onboard. I think, and also, I think it makes for happier employees to deal with these students when you look at it that way. Secondly, after dialogue between student services and the business office working together, the requirement for all students to submit a W9S form at admissions has been removed. This is one less step students will be required to complete for admissions. Through teamwork, Weatherford College has established a protocol that will ensure we are collecting the correct social security numbers upfront without mandating a form for students to do so. And lastly, the business office has recently negotiated a means to streamline our student ID processing, which will allow for WCPD to produce student IDs in alternate locations and not be limited to the PD office. As we move into the 2019-20 academic year, we are making plans for the coming year while we make application in August for the next round of six institutes that will start in the fall. While they're doing that, Texas Success has done a lot to help us. They're trying their very best to give us greater assistance along with our work on our, at our campuses. They provided a webinar on May 15th that many of our teammates were able to sign on and listen, and I believe they gained a great experience from that. Texas Success is working with us to provide a coach that will come to our campus sometime in September and will assist us in bringing the entire faculty and staff onboard with this initiative. And finally, a focus is now being placed, I think with Mr. Indy's going to discuss later, the culture of caring on this campus, but with the culture of caring and pathways that's being created for students on our campus, I think we have created a culture of caring based on change. And at this time, we are looking to September the 22nd for our next workforce seminar, our teammates to come together so everyone on campus can understand fully what Guided Pathways is. Already, this semester, we've seen a great deal of applications that were made for professional development funds to go to different sessions. Some were presenting guided pathways, guided pathway information, while others were going to seminars that they helped, would help them in their areas. And I think people are fully understanding what this pathways is. It's not just a thing out there that someone else is doing, it's what we all will be doing for the future and making it easier for students to come and graduate from college. I'll turn it over to the next individual.
Well, I just wanted to say, I think that that's, this Guided Pathways Program is, the more I understand it, it's taken me a while to get to the point where I think I understand it as well as I do now. To me, it's just a very, very excellent way to try to bring a different level of success to this school, and not just this school, but all over the, all over the nation, really. So I really appreciate all the work that you and all the people that are involved in that. I mean, it's a massive reorganization, in my opinion.
I believe it's an awareness that everyone is gaining.
I just want to tell you that I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's really, it's worth your time, but you spend a ton of time on it, and so I really appreciate that. Next up, Mr. Indy.
I'd just like to make comment that I agree with our board chairman, but I'd like to know, what is the mechanisms that allows a lot of what you said get to Wise County campus?
Well, we are, and I probably would let Adam speak to that area more, and why don't we come back to you next time and show exactly what we're doing with Wise County?
Does that work enough farther?
Would that work?
I think that's a great idea.
Our motto is "Whatever It Takes."
Okay. I think we could give more deep answers if we do that.
Mr. Indy, your on-demand study update? Thank you. If you don't mind, I've got a written report, but I want to answer a couple of questions. First, the changes that Dr. Cantrell described are across the board, so students at Wise County won't have to fill out those forms. Dual credit students will be able to come in without the transcripts, and the removal of the W9 means that no student, no matter where they're at, has to fill out that form in order to complete the application process. There are some things we're doing specific to Wise County, and I'd be glad to talk to you about some of them in terms of replacing testing center computers, upgrading instructional technologies, and upgrading the computer lab there, and also reallocation of space. We're working on creating a centralized, we call it a one-stop-shop in higher education, you probably know that term, rather than the divided spaces in Wise County where the dean's on one side of the building and the rest of the admissions staff is on the other. So we're working on a lot of things. We'd be glad to talk to you about them. You also mentioned inclusive access. I want to make sure, since it was brought to your attention, that you understand what it is. Inclusive access is the thing that we do where various textbook providers all agree to work together under a central contract through Texas Book to provide electronic copies of textbooks at a greatly reduced cost. It does not, however, hinder our bottom line in terms of the revenue generated by the bookstore, and that's because textbook publishers and bookstores are having about a 30 percent sell-through for textbooks, because students don't have the money to buy them, and especially not when they need them. So by going to electronic texts, they have about an 80 to 90 percent sell-through, and students can opt out of these programs. But because they have that high rate of return of sale, they can reduce the cost of the textbooks by roughly half and sometimes better. And the students have immediate access on the first day of class, which is much, very important to us, because while the money is important, the fact that the student has the book, we know from doing research and national research, that if the student doesn't have the book and the study materials, they don't do well in the classes. So having immediate. So having immediate access provides the student a greater possibility of success in the course, which is ultimately what it's about, because there's nothing worse than paying for a class you don't finish or don't succeed in when you're dealing with the educational environment. So we hope to pilot that in the spring of two thousand twenty with a couple of high-impact areas, English thirteen oh one, and then we hope to go full throttle in fall of two thousand twenty with a major cross-the-board implementation of, of inclusive access, and that's largely due to Dr. Alex Ebe and Dr. Scott Turniewski really pushing this agenda, bringing it to the faculty and the administration. It's a great idea, and it's just an example of people within the system who've been part of our pathways discussion, who've said, "There's something I can do about this if I can get enough people onboard," and they're doing it, and we need to be behind this kind of initiative, because it doesn't hurt the college, in fact, it could enhance our, our revenue generation while helping our students to succeed, which is ultimately what this whole place is about. So that's what you were talking about, and we're really excited about it. Apologize for that diversion, but I thought you might want to know.
That's good.
In terms of the demand study, there are a couple of things we're doing, and I'm gonna try to cover them quickly. We've just completed internally a revenue expenditure report, giving us a preliminary view of program performance, from a fiscal perspective at least. The data are exhaustive as far as the current system can provide, we're looking forward to getting the new ERP, and it yields statistical analysis of revenue with an error term of plus or minus three to five percent. It suggests that in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, the institution's instructional programs have been managed with greater efficiency than in previous budgetary cycles. The numbers right now are about a million dollars better than they were last year. That is not all the way through the end of the year, but it's very promising. In addition, we're mapping trends that indicate which programs are routinely operating in revenue-negative or revenue-positive modalities, and which are fluctuating between positive and negative balances from year to years. These data will help us to plan for program support, program development, and inevitably, in some cases, program reduction and closures. We've also just completed the first application of our new course evaluation system. We yielded a fifteen percent response rate for spring two thousand nineteen, that's better than nothing, but we want to get it higher. The data indicate to us the average instructor rating was a four-point-four-seven on a scale, on a five-point scale, which is pretty good. Specific areas where instructors and courses rated strongly included encouraging students to reflect on learning, demonstrating the importance or significance of subject matter, and clarity of how topics align with course designs. Areas where improvements were indicated included the development of skills working in teams, which scored at a three-point-nine-one, forming teams to facilitate learning at three-point-eight-one, and developing creative capacity at three-point-eight-six. These aren't disastrously bad scores, but they're lower than we want them to be, and they indicate to us areas where we could see improvement. Perhaps most interesting, however, is that respondents generally presented self-perceptions related to coursework in the range of three-point-three-nine to three-point-nine-eight, while rating their development and learning in the range of three-point-nine-seven to four-point-one-three. Those numbers won't mean much to you, but what they say to us is that students rated their courses and instructors higher than they rated their own commitment to completing that coursework or their success in the coursework. And we might see that as a negative, but what we see, or at least what I see, is a furthering of a recognition that our students embrace their educational experiences in the context of a whole life of experiences, and they recognize that their commitments are measured across all the other things that they have to do, like their work and their life, their, their home commitments. Forty-four, fifty-four percent of our students are part-time students now. The stereotype of the college student who goes off to the college or university and concentrates most of their time or energy in going to school simply doesn't apply to Weatherford College students anymore, not across the board, and we need to embrace our current student, the way they really live their lives and the way they embrace education and their goals. We'll continue to explore these data as we complete summer evaluations and look forward to fall two thousand nineteen. We finished the student interest survey, and our data has been analyzed. The top three high school plans that we saw were attending Weatherford College to earn a degree or certificate at fourteen-point-eight-four percent, attending Weatherford College to earn transfer credit, and then transferring to a four-year university or college at twenty-point-seven percent, and attending a four-year college or university at forty-one percent. So the largest population think that they are going to get out of high school and go to a four-year institution, and the financial data that we look at don't tell us that that is typically the pattern that most students will be able to achieve, so it's an interesting issue for us. Top three degree plans, forty-one percent intend to get a bachelor's, twenty-five a master's, and eleven percent a doctorate in medicine, so we've got a lot of students with high goals, and that's a good thing to know. Top three majors, when they identify them with us, a criminal justice AAS, it's a nursing AAS, and either the AA or AS in general study, which means their degree plan isn't specified in a field, and we need to work on that. Then, top three reasons students do not go to college, "I don't know what I want to study." Forty-four-point-nine percent don't go to college because they don't know why they would. "I can't afford it." Thirty-four-point-six percent. Thirty-five percent of students might want to go to college but can't, that's something we've got to address. And tied, "I don't have an interest in attending college, and I don't feel academically ready for college," at twenty-six-point-five percent. There's a lot we have to do with this data, it tells us that students who want to go to college don't know why they want to go to college, or they don't have the money to go to college, or they don't know what to do with college when they get here and they feel underprepared. There's a lot of work for us to do here. We'll continue to pursue this information on student interest in the fall with new prompts focusing on course scheduling options. Finally, we're also reviewing student performance data by instructors for spring two thousand nineteen, that's grades by teacher. This is something we gather every year and we share it with our, internally with our instructional administrators, our dean's group looked at it this morning in our meeting, and we'll use these data along with student evaluations and program performance data to inform our planning and improvement processes. We're pretty careful about where we share that, where they share that information around. That concludes my report on demand study. If you have any questions or concerns, I'd be glad to field them now.
Dr. Marlet, anything?
Always.
Probably, I don't think it was there today, but what, where, where are you generating information about, just say, Wise County, meeting the, I know we do a pretty good job of meeting the needs and surveying the work studies side of things, but are we really penetrating or getting information, good information from the high schools to know what level we are serving the, the high schools there or the academic needs as opposed to work studies and vocational needs?
We are. The student response surveys from those that are coming back is the student interest survey. We can pinpoint students in Wise County and disaggregate that data and look at what they're wanting, what's keeping them out of school. In terms of academic performance, because the schools themselves provide the majority of the academic activities, we're evaluating what they're doing. We certainly can evaluate what they're doing in dual credit with us and their matriculation to college after high school completion by district. That's fairly sensitive, because it's sensitive to them about what it says about how successful they are about sending students to college, so we tend to handle that carefully, and what we're looking for is, what can we do to enhance it when students are inclined to go to college but not attending? And yes, we can disaggregate that data by Wise County only.
Well, it, it's probably not a lot different from surrounding counties, I mean, probably.
I, I wouldn't assume that.
You would not assume that? On what basis would you not assume that?
It's my dissertation study, and locale has tremendous impact on where a student goes to school and when students go to school.
It does in terms of it being a suburban or urban-like environment, but do you, do you find that, do you find that these, you, the, the material that you went over just a little while ago about the reasons why they didn't attend college, are they very similar to Wise County, or is there any differentiation?
They tend to be, I don't want to speak for Mr. Butler, but if we disaggregate that data, what we'll look, what we'll see is socioeconomic status has a lot to do with student success, it tends to be tied to racial, ethnic data, not that one thing causes another, but things seem to be linked, and as they're isolated by communities, that tends to have an impact. Also, distance from the, distance from an offering institution, which we currently don't measure, but which I will be measuring.
Yeah. For instance, Bridgeport has got, lists a little over his fifty percent Hispanic students.
Yes.
And do we need to, or do we do anything to reach out to that population?
Actually, yes, and that target?
Yeah, target.
Specifically? Specifically, this past fall and past summer and again this year, we will create documents, not only for Wise County, critical documents regarding onboarding to the college are now provided in Spanish as well as in English, not that we assume that everybody who is from a Hispanic family speaks Spanish, but there may be people there for whom English is a second language. We also do onboarding in English and in Spanish, we have an in-service meeting for that, and we're targeting that population in terms of our, trying to get them into the institution for programs like STEM-based programs.
Well, that's an interesting point, but I, most of those high, high school students, when they're graduated by that time, they're all reading English, I don't care where, what their background is, I spent six, sixteen years there part-time, and they're there. So I'm not sure how, how important that is to provide anything to them, maybe their, maybe their families.
So that's what it's about, it's if I have to show my mother or my father why I have to spend so much time at college, and mom or dad doesn't read it English, but I do, mom or dad can now understand that my nursing program takes this much time.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering how much you, how much that you value that or use it to those schools in Wise County that have such a high Hispanic population.
We can certainly measure it.
We can.
So let's set that as a target.
Can I ask a quick question? You had mentioned a statistic about twenty-five percent don't consider college, or I can't remember exactly what the average was, but they kind of have given up before they even got there. I'm wondering, I think we've done a good job addressing the high schools, do we go into intermediate schools, are we starting a little bit earlier maybe to, we, we've noticed in healthcare when we reach out to the families earlier, especially with at-risk kids, getting there sooner than when habits are formed or tend to be better, and there's a little bit more parent involvement in the intermediate schools, are we reaching out? Is that?
We are, in two ways, and I'm, I'm glad you recognize that, because by the time we hit high school with a lot of these groups, it's too late, the decision is either made or has been made for the student. Financial realities seem to be what they are, so there's some things that we're doing. Because dual credit can now reach down into the ninth grade, we now can reach down into the eighth grade and seventh grade for getting students onboarded into dual credit, which is tremendously important for the students who are at risk and least likely to attend. Also, because we have our talent search program, which reaches out into our community, into the populations of students least likely to attend, we're encouraging them through that program, that grant-based program, to get involved in college and think of themselves as college-based students, but there's more we're going to be doing through pathways to encourage students to get involved, particularly as we reach into underrepresented populations. But you're absolutely right, we've got to start targeting things earlier in those communities where the expectation of non-attendance is real, and all the bells and whistles in the junior and senior year won't change that.
Because I know when I lived in Germany, they, they started tracking students as early as the fourth grade for either college or technical schools, and I just wondered if we could maybe turn the tide if we got there a little bit earlier.
I'm exactly where you are in that, and I think that's where we're going to start heading. The question is, how do we get in and how do we do it appropriately? And part of what, the way we'll do that is looking at specialized programs and doing things like STEM Mania, which is for fourth graders, but we're going to look at advancing that to that sixth and seventh and eighth grade population. We also do a children's theater outreach that stops at sixth grade. It seems like we're leaving them off from that middle segment, and that's the area where we really want to start hitting them.
I know we do wonderful, Ms. Malas, question of promise, I know we do wonderful things with high school students, getting them to visit campus, do we do anything with sixth and seventh graders, maybe a career day, or why you should think about college, and maybe just, we still have minds that are forming that age, do, do we do anything like that? And I'm sorry, I don't know if we do.
No, 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 it's a great question, and that's exactly what we need to start doing, and that's why people like Shante back there, is Shante Seber, who's working in our Welcome Center, is one of those people who's stirring those questions and saying, "Why don't we try this?" And your idea about bringing students in in that intermediate-age group and that junior high school age group is exactly where we're heading. It's just a matter of contact and bringing them in.
The foundation of the Texas sixty by thirty is to start not only at the fourth grade, but to the kindergarten with these kinds of considerations. So anyway.
Thank you very much.
Excellent input, I really do appreciate it.
Mr. Indy, you're up again on the Vet Tech program update.
Sorry to keep all your time going, but we've got some great updates on the Vet Tech program. During the past month, we've included the veterinary medicine program director position in the proposed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty institutional budget, so that position will come online in September two thousand nineteen. We met with the City of Weatherford Director of Municipal and Community Services, Mr. Dustin Deal, he's here with us today, and Attorney Ed Zellers to discuss the inter-local agreement. While a good deal of effort has gone into creating a foundation for this agreement through the early discussions of the, the program, several critical issues remain which require detailed attention to complete the agreement. We have agreed to hours of operation and access to include non-business hours, but to limit access to specific areas of the shelter, like where the narcotics are kept, so that we're operating safely and the city shelter is operating safely. We're working through personnel issues, including assignment of college-provided personnel to instructionally-related activities at the shelter. That means making sure we know that the college-provided faculty members are working other college-related activities that are instructionally-related while helping the shelter to operate in appropriate manners. And Dustin and Dr. Graffel and I discussed that just a few minutes ago, and we'll have another meeting soon so that we can work through that. In addition, we've agreed that college-provided professional staff will be encouraged to volunteer for the shelter, and volunteer work will be considered in professional performance evaluation. It's part of what they do as service to the institution and the community. Instructional technology equipment is being reviewed for need, usability, and prioritization to make sure the investments are appropriate to the program and time to serve our students in a responsible manner. The instructional technology costs that we've associated with our, our plan are a little bit higher than I think we originally anticipated, so we're trying to figure out how to bear those costs and what's necessary and what may be able to put off a little bit while still doing a top-quality program. Imaging equipment, that's the radiology unit, was estimated at a sixty-thousand-dollar rate to purchase. WC is currently considering the imaging system in the college radiology program as well as proposed space in the shelter to determine how equipment required for the Vet Tech program might best be procured and assigned to maximize instructional use. So if we can take our unit here and transfer it to the Vet Tech, I'm sorry, the shelter and our Vet Tech program, and buy a new unit here and do that efficiently, we're thinking about doing that, because obviously, that's a unit that we'll use heavily here, but we're looking at what will work best. For future actions, so that's what we've been doing recently, future actions, the WC Board of Trustees will be asked to consider the timeline for Vet Tech program initiation. That'll either be in your July or August board meeting, and we'll give you a formal rundown on what the, the timeline for initiation will be. The Vet, Veterinary Medicine Director will meet with the academic administrators to finalize proposed changes to the Vet Assisting Program, particularly those related to personnel and clinical internships and settings. The programs have to align, and that now includes all of these hours spent at the, at the site that might align on those programs. The inter-local agreement, we hope to finalize that in the next month or so with the city. The proposed reorganization of the Vet Medicine Program to align with agriculture, business, and communication, that restructuring is designed to enhance the relationship between business, agriculture, and communication. We see a real strong synergy there, and that will include veterinary medicine, so that people are learning how to communicate well, how to manage the businesses of veterinary medicine and agriculture business. We plan on doing that in August of two thousand nineteen. The planned acquisition of instructional technologies and imaging equipment, we have to figure out those budgets, who's paying for what and when, and we'll do that this fall, later this summer. Development of Vet Tech Program Marketing Plan this summer, installation of program information into the WC catalog, that'll happen in the fall and spring, application to the AVA, AVMA for program initiation, spring two thousand twenty, installation of a Vet Tech Program Budget into next year's budget, that'll happen in the spring, hiring a veterinary technologist upon your approval, that will happen sometime in the spring so that we are in time to begin program initiation in fall two thousand twenty, and the Vet Assistant Program, because it has to be modified to match Vet Tech, that will take effect, those, those modifications will occur in fall two thousand twenty. So that's a rundown. So that's a rundown on what we're doing on Vet Tech. Are there any questions?
Sure.
For funding, have you reached out to Bayer, Pfizer, Siemens, Alcon for those imaging equipments for donations? I know they're very active in these kind of programs, and they're very generous.
Right now, we've got the estimate on the piece of equipment. Dustin got that a few weeks ago. And those are the individuals that we will be reaching out to to say, does anybody have anything that they would care to either donate or to give to us at a reasonable rate or a lower rate? But I'd be glad to get any names that you've got because at this point, I know next to nothing about radiology equipment. I'm having to rely on our health sciences folks. This is a fairly new program, not only for us, but in the state to do this kind of thing, so we would love help with that. Have you got any names?
Mr. Deal will know better than I do, but I know several of those organizations will fund to have testing sites. There'll be a testing center, and I don't know if he qualifies as a testing center, but there's a lot of money in being a satellite testing center.
We, we would welcome your, any ideas you have and any names you've got because they're more than what I've got right now.
And have we reached out to any of the larger ranches about, or vet hospitals about their input and working in collaboration with them?
I know that Dr. Glenn has put out his fielder quite a bit, and he knows everyone.
Yeah, he does.
But we just had also portable ultrasounds and a full-sized ultrasound unit donated. So that's all, that aspect of imaging is to be accounted for.
But I'm just talking on a general basis for the Vet Tech program. I mean, have we, have we reached out to those?
Not in an organized way, no, and we should certainly do that.
One of the items we'll have to put into this list that I gave you, which is obviously not exhaustive, is the forming of a Vet Tech advisory committee. We have one for vet assisting. We'll have to make one that is unique for Vet Tech, and that would be a great time. Get the names of people in industry who might be willing to contribute and support the program and help us to direct it because, as we've told you before, this program, we believe, will be unique in the nation in terms of this partnership. And we're really in unexplored territory as we try to create this inter-local agreement and the collaboration.
One wants to start would be the TSCRA with Stacy Fox. I think she would be a good point of contact.
Casey Cox?
Stacy Fox.
Stacy, thank you. You know who that is. All right.
Very well.
I did want to add one thing related to your question. We do have an advisory committee.
Right.
And, and we're going to have a meeting of that in the very near future. So that is part of the way that we can put out the fielder.
How much are practicing veterinarians in, in my case, Wise County, for instance, involved in this?
Practicing veterinarians involved in our advisory committees in Wise County?
In Wise County? I, Dr. Gibb was at that time, but I don't believe anyone from there has, has been involved. But I could certainly, we're always adding to our committee following this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grafful.
All right. I guess we're to Mr. Finley. 2018-19 graduation report, success.
Well, June's student success numbers with heart will focus on graduation and academic awards. The following graph shows academic awards for the past three years. 2016, 2017 academic years are complete. However, the 18-19 academic year does not reflect our summer completers. The blue column represents degrees earned, orange depicts certificates, and gray shows core completers. There is a duplication in core completers and degree completers as students who complete an associate of arts or associate of science would also become core complete. As you can see, degrees and certificates have remained relatively consistent the past three years. Looking closer at this academic year, the following table represents the type of awards. These numbers are fairly consistent with previous year breakdowns on type of credentials awarded. August is blank as we have not completed the summer term, but our current projections on awards based, based on petitions filed is 171. This number includes both degrees and certificates. This is only a projection and will fluctuate as additional students petition for graduation. I would like to draw attention to the core completers. As of the end of the spring term, core completers stand at 412. Again, this is expected to increase once the summer term is completed. Looking back at previous years, core completers have gradually risen each year. However, the general AA and AS degree completers have remained stagnant and slightly dropped in some cases. Due to our growth, it would be expected to have the general associate of arts and associate of science degrees rise accordingly with our core completers. This speaks to our need to expand field of study options for student, a guided pathway initiative to provide appropriate paths beyond the general core curriculum. Instruction and student services have been working diligently to expand course offerings outside our common core curriculum. This fall, students will have 12 field of study options to choose from. The Texas High Education Courting Board is continuing to approve additional fields of study plans, and these are being incorporated when feasible and appropriate. With these plans of study or fields of study, our goal is to see a significant increase in awarded degrees. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report. Be happy to address any questions.
Sure. Questions?
How does that August this year compare, estimate for this year compare with last year's?
They're, they're along, right on. When you take the 120, the 171 for what we're projected this August, it puts us right where we were last year with, with associate's degrees and certificates. Core completers, it'll, it'll continue to increase.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Finley. Move to item number seven, future agenda items and meetings, Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are hoping next month to bring bids for our north parking lot to you. If our architects meet the timeline, we're hoping to bring that to you, to you for consideration and potential approval next month. With our 17 percent enrollment projection for the fall, we're hoping to hear the new parking lot as quickly as possible without delaying that timeline. So please be expecting that next month.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, sir.
Announcements, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. Mr. McNally, be glad to know that this campus has been full of kids this last couple of weeks. We had 100 kids at our basketball camp this past week. The coaches have brought back after a number of years. And we have an advanced teen musical theater camp happening right now. And so the top of your events there is the production they've put together over two weeks. I saw a sneak preview of this. It's going to be a tremendous production of Frozen Junior. Starts Friday night, runs through Saturday and Sunday down in the Altec. And it'll be a really great performance and a great time for those kids to be a part of our campus as well. We also have our ex-students meeting on July the 8th, and I want to reiterate that you are all welcome to attend.
Dr. Marlet.
Yes, sir.
Oh, but I was just asked, that's vocal music?
It's musical theater. Yes, sir, Broadway-type production.
No, no other instruments, just vocal, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, for that one. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. We're going to adjourn the open session and go into closed session in about two, three minutes. Thank you. All right. We're going to move from the closed session. That's been closed. We're going to open up and move back into the public meeting, and I will call that public meeting to order. And just as a footnote, the closed session, I didn't say this at the time, but the closed session certainly addressed all the items that were listed in the posted agenda that I referred to when I opened the meeting. So, and there will be no action items taken under number 10. That would be our next item for consideration. There will be no possible action, I mean, there will be no action on number 10 dealing with real property. So moving to number 11, there will be no possible action taken concerning the posting under number 11. And so with number 12, is there a motion to adjourn?
I saw move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned.